Okay.
I forgot.
Will that work?
I might.
Yes, will that work?
EJ. Oh.
Are the lights on?
Put it yellow on.
Steve, I wanted me to type that. I had a free lunch today.
Oh, good, good, yeah.
Well, why didn't you tell Steve you don't? He likes me probably more than he likes EJ.
Uh, he likes me though.
Well, he does like me.
He does more than likes me.
Well, when I'm done, he's the one who likes me most.
You get romance on there?
If we take care of this.
This is her lawn.
So then she started out with her parlor.
Okay, Harrison, you ready? We're live, okay. We'll go ahead and tell the meeting that we're at seven thirty and we welcome everyone out. Uh, Rod, would you please lead us in the place?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Adam, would you please offer your hand?
Our dear heavenly Father, we approach you this evening. We are grateful to be here to be able to serve citizens of the city of Shelley. We are grateful for those that donate their time and put forth efforts so that our city looks as beautiful as it is and has a good feeling about it. We are grateful for the first responders and those that protect our way of life here. We pray that will be with them and bless them that they will be protected and watched over. We pray too that the things in which we discuss this evening will be able to do that which is best for the citizens and for the city of Shelley. And these things we pray for in the name of Jesus Christ, amen.
Thank you. We have no building permits tonight, so I would accept the motion to approve Consent Agenda Item 4A, which is the minutes.
Mayor. I'll make the motion that we approve Consent Calendar Items 4A.
I'll second it.
Then move in second that we approve Consent Agenda Items 4A. Jeff.
Aye.
Luke.
Aye.
Kim.
Aye.
Adam.
Aye.
Four ayes. Did you guys catch that far right? Uh, PSI.
Jeremy. Yeah, just back and I saw like a waste alert that we were on for City Council. And I don't know if you guys are ready, I just.
I apologize too.
Yeah, I just read your email too.
And I just made, I messed up. I thought you guys weren't on the agenda, so I'm glad you're here.
Yeah, so we're good. Um, so EJ and I, he emailed me back. I made a few small changes on dates that you kind of recommended. And maybe, I don't know if we want to explain those to council.
Yeah, just real quick, so I don't have any problem with the amendment. Uh, the only thing I noticed is the original contract was for five years. Jeremy's coming back in year, at the end of year four, right? So the question just is, and I don't know if you, and you're welcome to comment on this too, but the question is, do we want to start the five-year renewal now? Basically forego the last year of the current contract? Or if you want to become effective next year? And I don't know if this makes a difference to you or not? If it helps you to do it sooner or not? I mean, I know you're talking to us sooner because you wanted to be proactive and get it lined up. But anyway, that was the only thing I saw is there was an inconsistency because in one place it said that the five-year period was going to start now. Another one, there was a table that said that the five-year period went through twenty twenty-seven. And so it just didn't match up. So I just wanted to resolve that. And so, yeah, I suggested coming and talk to the council. And like I said, I don't really see a reason one way or the other why it matters. We just need it to be clear.
So I went with it now because just with the county's rate increases and everything, that way we're just rocking and rolling. That helps us too when we go and get new equipment and trucks that we can show like, hey, this is a contract or this agreement that we have with the city of Shelley is already in place and we're good for another five years.
I think it'd be clearer if we just start with five-year.
Right now?
Yeah. The only question I have, and I don't, did you print copy that last? Oh, yeah, yeah, right here.
Should be.
Without my glasses, we'll try. So, um, the only, the only thing, and I wanted to just make sure that it's clear so we, even if we just mention on record, in section one, you say that the five-year term is extended through September thirtieth, twenty twenty-six, which is fine. Then below, in the, in the table there, you've got extension years. And I guess it starts in twenty twenty-five, but it mostly in twenty twenty-six. So that was part of my.
Yeah, and that's where it's just the rate, that's what we're.
The rate that will start.
That's called out, good. Twenty twenty-five to twenty twenty-six will be at seventy-seven dollars a ton.
Okay, okay, if that'll be that rate starting in twenty twenty-five, that will carry over through that final year.
Uh-huh. Yeah, and then we'll probably be back in twenty twenty-five to renew it again.
Right, right, so it may not even be an issue, yeah. Okay, that, that was it. I'm, I'm so glad, I felt so scared when I came in tonight. I saw that was on the agenda and I thought, I told you. So I'm really glad you're here.
Yeah, will be. It's for a one week and you.
It was published.
Yeah, we're good.
Yeah, anyway. Glad, yeah, glad you're here.
Okay.
That's it.
So, uh, anybody got any questions for him? Comments? If not, I would accept the motion. Hold on a second, Justin?
Yeah, because we're, may I ask?
You're happy with the.
I think that's the new rates we're getting into, that's where we're at, so.
Okay, alright.
I'll make a motion that we accept the amendment to the.
Oh, yeah, yeah.
Agreement we have with PSI.
For a five-year contract.
Five-year contract.
I'll second.
Then move in second and then we go ahead and approve the amendment with the five-year renewal contract. All in favor? All in favor? Okay.
I'll swing back to the next year too, we'll get it signed and.
He can send it tonight, I guess, if you, or a couple days.
I got one right here.
Boy, some. You forgot the envelope.
Yeah.
You forgot the envelope.
I know, right?
And then you'll get one back.
Yeah, I'll make copies of this in the other room. EJ, the mayor. Oh, no, you're good. I took off for football, for Greek kid, and then I was sitting out front for twenty-nine, three emails.
Oh, I bet you didn't pay any taxes.
Okay. Let's see. Oh, next on the agenda, recognize this from the floor.
Are you going to extend the cleanup for another week since we've had bad weather?
No, no.
Okay.
So cleanup, so cleanup will be, we're going to go through next week and start picking up.
Okay.
Yeah, once we, once we go past your house, we're not making a second, third trip. Like, we're going to make one trip in front of all the residents and just clean up the rundown.
And that's next week?
Next week, we'll start next Monday. So you can put stuff out this week, this weekend. I don't care if you put it out until we get to your house, but once we pass it, we won't be making a round and come back and pick it up again.
There's not a fourth or fifth pickup?
When we pass, we go, we're like four, five pickups, right?
Every time, every time there's someone on the road.
We're going to try to let anybody put stuff out for the week.
So you can put our street on Friday, right? Jeff, maybe you can put that.
Put the cookies on top of your shop.
So, is that the only question you have?
That was it.
Okay. So, yeah, you can put it out all this week and we'll start picking up on Monday, so. Uh, let's see. Cause, uh, consideration of Fox Crossing Development request for reconsideration. So. Anybody got any comments, they got any questions? We probably just need to do another public hearing to move forward on that. So we move first, who does it first?
Well, yeah. If, if the council doesn't want to reconsider it, then because of the notice of imprisonment, it looks like November ninth would be the next time we could hold another hearing.
I think it will be good, I think it will be good to, to talk to them and to have that, that conversation down in the public, in the public hearing. Whereas last time, I think it was just, so. And to hear from other people.
I agree.
Yes, there were some questions.
There was, yeah.
Flesh up with one thing, then you'll have your head on it.
Right.
Hey.
I'll make a motion, just go ahead.
No, guys.
I'll make a motion that we, um, what is it?
Reconsider.
Reconsider the Fox Crossing Development.
And, and hold.
Hold up another hearing for November ninth.
Do I have a second?
I'll second.
Then move in second is that we can reconsider Fox Crossing Development and we have a public hearing on November ninth. All in favor? Four in favor. Uh, business licensees.
There was one door-to-door and you had all of the background checks has been done on that. And then there was one re-ruled for Domino's Pizza. Or actually, I think Domino's had a different owner, so they filled out as a new applicant. And the background check has been done on that one.
And then the background check you said was done on the door-to-door?
Yeah. Yeah, there should be a copy behind it. Rod, do you remember doing that one?
Yes.
And what did they tell them?
They.
Home security?
Yeah, door-to-door security.
I'll make a motion that we approve business licenses as stated.
About a second?
One second.
For move in second is that we go ahead and approve the business licenses as stated, uh, door-to-door sales and Domino's Pizza. All in favor? Four in favor? Thank you. Airbnb regarding pilot's warrant amendment.
That's the one that.
I'm not sure it was tabled because I, I can't remember why, but. EJ?
Well, I just remember somebody was here, wanted to get a little bit more information about it. That.
Which one?
Didn't it have to say two? Cause I remember.
Is there a question about?
Because of this, um, complex, you know, was it with ERUs? Was it something like that that we were talking about?
Yeah. Because it wasn't.
Is it per room?
Was it per room, was it per?
That's right.
Yes.
Whole deal.
Cause there were some more long-term rentals, I guess is what they would be, right? Or, or if they're short-term and it's more vacant, then maybe not as many ERUs. I remember that was one of the questions.
Well, and so the tough thing is, is until we find out for sure on the ERUs, I, I know there's a formula to figure the ERUs, like for a hotel and things like that.
It's based on room for a hotel. But on an Airbnb, if you have a house and, and if we depend on the owner to tell us when it's filled and when it's not, that becomes very difficult. Because sometimes we don't get told, so they're paying unoccupied rates when it should be a full rate.
I think that if it's an Airbnb, it should be four and a half.
And I, I.
And then there's no question, right?
Yeah.
Was there any other question? I, I remember that one specifically.
No, so, so I guess my question then, okay, Airbnbs. So somebody, let's say somebody buys a house and they want to rent it out as an Airbnb. So they pay a full rate, and I'm just going over this in my mind, sort of a verbally in my mind. So they pay a full rate, but what happens if they're only occupied four days a month? Through the winter? Do we do it in non-occupancy through the winter?
I think it's a cost of doing business.
Yeah, because if we start doing non-occupancy, it's hard enough right now with some of the landlords to, landlords to get to tell us when it's empty and not full. Cause we, we find them all the time. We've been doing unoccupied and it's been occupied for six months. We have to go back and back, Joe. And that's because we only find out kind of through the rate line.
Okay.
So what would the ordinance, are there any other issues that you would look at addressing?
Well.
Did Brian have to be? Like a.
Some of the things, some of the things that you run into when you're talking about rentals and that we've done, and I'm sure you run into it in Mexico. Is that there are restrictions in places, like number of cars, number of people, length of stay.
Yeah.
So if we just, if it's an Airbnb and it's a residence, I don't think that's the same as a building built for just to be an Airbnb. That's closer to a hotel. So it kind of sits in the middle. Airbnbs are not necessarily a residence, could be, but the ones we're talking about are not necessarily residents right now. It's the old hotel.
Who originally brought this issue to?
Christians. The people that own trees. They're redoing, they're redoing their, down there for that. Just wanted to make sure that they have, that we didn't have the ordinances or what were they?
Oh, okay.
I know there's this city in Utah and like, these guys were going to use it as an Airbnb, but the city said, no, we're not going to do Airbnbs. And so now they have to do it as long-term rentals and not short.
Yeah, I know.
It's all, it's just a whole new thing that I don't think we've really looked into, like, if we even have an opinion, one hand or the other.
As soon as Shelley becomes the recreational capital of Western United States. I think then we can discuss it at that point, but until then, Potato Creek is going to be at the top, Liz next to the Cut Center Disney World. I might be wrong.
So.
I don't even know what.
Great analogy, Jeff.
What's important to me?
No, you, no, I'm just doing anything.
You recommended that they just be required to do a business license.
I think that that should, that should be.
I think it should, and at this point, I don't think it's a problem. And if we certainly see a problem crop up, then I think we can address it.
Operator is a business and then.
We don't have a problem at that point. We don't know if the Pandora's Box was not doing anything.
Cause the only thing I can see in, in looking at it and driving by it enough times the last few weeks is that parking, that they say they park out back. So if they're parking out back, they're not on the street, they're not in view. Doesn't sound like it's going to be a problem.
So, and bottom line is if we, if somebody on the other side of town starts renting and they have five cars show up and they only have parking for two, then we're going to have to.
They're going to have to address that, but.
Until we have that problem, I don't think.
There's a couple homes around town that are already, are already done as Airbnbs, but nobody's had a problem.
Nobody's had a problem, but, yeah.
So.
I, I thought, I thought somebody brought it with a specific issue or request, or there was a gap in our code or something like that. It sounds like there's inquiry, which is good, appreciate it. But I don't know, I mean, I think our existing code for now on.
We'll cover it until we have an issue.
Yeah.
Okay, so just to require a business license.
Yeah, I think that'd be the only.
Alright, since it's on the agenda. Alright.
Then the reason they do it.
Alright, next on the agenda is, uh, Consider an annual contribution to RADI.
Yeah, we, we always brought this to council and they've got this, but we, it's budgeted and they typically, um, it's typically four thousand dollars. I just wanted to, I guess tonight, if we can decide, can I just automatically pay it? Or do we need to bring it to council each year for the, the four thousand dollar contribution?
How's our considering?
Are, are they still functioning?
They are.
They are, yeah.
They're actually doing quite, uh.
Apparently you're the man of the.
By the way, I'm, I really.
I just haven't heard, I haven't heard.
Well, they all looked at you like they're, you should know.
You brought it, you were the one that.
What, what was your connection just, did you just report on it or you're involved with it?
I'm involved with it, we, we created it, no. So I, I've been involved with, um, Urwa, we have sought them out for grants. And they, um, they do a lot of grant writing and they've been doing a lot of, um, grant like writing for, uh, public entities in addition to corporate corporations. And so, I mean, there's, there's still a, you know, a valid entity. Uh, I know the commission of Bingham County were happening a couple years ago and I didn't love them, so. I don't know what happened down there with that, but.
They got a grant?
Um, I don't know.
Maybe.
I think we should probably invite back to the council to explain to them what they've been doing lately.
That's a great idea, great idea.
They'd be, and I think it'd be informative, yeah.
I would, uh, I would like to be on their list of, of customers and things that they might have coming down the bike as well. And I was going to go spend some time visiting with her, but I haven't done that.
Who was talking to you?
That, um, I can't forget her name, but, but I met her and we talked quite a bit after the, uh, Urwa meeting and I thought, well, it'd be nice for she comes to council, but. I was back in July.
Personally, I think we should, I'd like to hear some accountability, at least of what they're kind of doing before I approve it.
I, I do too, I think it would be good to have them come visit with us if we can just put it up.
Let's see if we can get them to come, uh. I know I got them on here tomorrow.
So I would like, I'd like to table it so we can hear from them, that's my.
Okay, so just call them and invite them to a meeting?
Awesome, go ahead.
Yeah.
What's that your motion?
So it's been moved in second and that we table it so we can get them to come and visit with us.
Good job.
Uh, just to explain kind of what they've been working on and what's happening.
Okay.
All in favor? Four in favor?
Let them do it.
That's right. Anyway, I got their numbers or someone. Um, okay. Okay, consider fees for subsequent meetings with developers to discuss proposed developments. So what this means is if we have a fee and we have one meeting or two meetings, then after that, we turn them again.
Okay, so we just, you know, we redid the permit thing and we added a pre-application meeting because we paid Dave to come to that, because he meets with their engineers and Justin and that. But Dave, we, we pay him for it, to go over everything that's expected of them and what they expect of the city and so forth and so on. There's a lot of times that the developer will request a bunch of meetings and want to include our engineer and we have to pay him for that, but I don't have any way to collect to cover that cost that we're paying out for him to do that. Do you want to add something? And, and if you do, we'll have to go forward and have a little bit of a public hearing to establish a new fee, but do you want to establish something like that for subsequent meetings?
What does other cities do?
Yes, they charge.
Other cities, bigger cities charge for everything.
You pay, you pay for the application, you pay for the application meeting.
You pay for meeting and.
You pay for living, the plans, you pay for everything.
You pay for review, reviewing the plans and not doing it.
Right, you have to provide them with.
A lot of cities have their own engineers on board too, their own staff.
And their own planning departments too, that do some of this stuff, but we don't have that. I don't see a problem with it. I think we actually should. Because just in the past, twelve months, how much time has one of us spent and how much time has Dave spent on this? And Justin? That's above and beyond.
Yeah, we might include like, like you said, have the, the application meeting and then one other meeting in case something wasn't made clear, then we'll come and time it.
Then we have to charge for subsequent ones.
The, the reason I think we should charge a fee is because I think we need to have Dave become more involved in a lot of things.
I agree with you.
Exactly.
I think there's a lot of things that Dave needs to become more involved in our city with as we go forward and, and we don't want to pay for it as developers.
Yeah.
So I think the developers should pay for it and so I think that needs to be, whoever his fee is, we need to set a fee that.
And you know, we can do it by actual costs. We do, we charge other things actual costs, the publications and so forth and so on. So like if he came to a meeting and lasted an hour, we charge whatever we up there.
Yeah, well, and, and along those lines too, I was thinking, what if they didn't request another meeting, but they're sending emails and they're sending revised plans and they're sending in questions? And then we have to forward it to Dave and they've asked it, you know? So maybe if they don't need a full-blown next meeting, maybe we don't want a fixed fee and you do set it more to something akin to actual cost. And that way, if they're more, it encourages the developers to be more efficient in their presentation.
Well, yeah, I mean, if you're going to do emails and things like that outside of meeting, that becomes even more cumbersome. If you wanted to turn them away from that to solving all things in a, in a meeting. And so I think you need to penalize them if they do send in those kind, that kind of.
Or maybe required, I mean, if they, if they send anything else you want to ask. I'm just brainstorming, I'm not.
Well, why not do it on a, why not do it on a.
See it required of.
Right.
Why not do it on a, come up with a pay scale? So first two are, are included. The next time then it's a full-blown meeting is this. Correspondence above two is this, you know?
A lot of times though, if there's like email correspondence, usually it goes to be either to Justin or to I. Don't you agree with that?
We'll just make it, we'll make it part of that first meeting.
A lot of it would be like a review of maybe the plans that Dave's giving K to review the plans, so it kind of ties in with that. The meetings are kind of an in-person, person thing that he's, he makes himself more available for that.
So we just make it on a scale of in-person versus correspondence versus follow-up, those kind of things so that it's.
I think it would be important to move everything that we do in development that requires the engineer to have Dave be present and to charge accordingly for that. Now, I think about back when Golden Valley came in and we were having a big meeting downstairs and we had all everybody coming in. We had the Rocky Mountain Power and we had Intermountain Gas and we had Highway Department, had everybody there. And I asked Dave at the last minute, can you make this meet, please? And he came at that meeting and that was meeting where we talked about those ERUs and about loads and things like that at the plant. And I think, what would have happened if we never said that? Does he remember what happened? And we would have been in big trouble. But, you know, he was present, he was there, he got in writing, he makes sure, he covered that area. And I just think, wow, that would have been horrible if we wouldn't have done that. So I think we need to have more present than, than not.
So do you want me to set something up to establish?
Yeah, I would say let's do something so that we have a, either a pay scale or whatever work charged, we charge them.
Okay, I'll talk to Dave about it too.
Oh, okay. You said you need some direction so that when we do consider it, we got to have, we can't go above whatever's published.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Yeah, I'll talk to Dave and put something together, then email it out before I compile it to bring back the call for hearing.
That should work.
Okay, yeah, cause we, we don't want the citizens that are living here paying for developers. Okay, good. Alright, uh, old council business, North Bingham County Park.
So, uh, I actually met with Snake River Water Nation District today and, uh, that part of the North Bingham County Park actually has water rights. And so it's just a matter of getting the water there, which we talked about bringing over from, from the field there over to North Bingham County Park.
Is that where the water runs, is it on this field side? Is there a ditch to the back end of that somehow?
There's a.
No, the ditch comes.
No, we'd have to put something.
We'd have to put a culvert in.
We would, we would. Yeah.
So you get it right.
But we have.
You just got to get water to it.
And I think that's probably the county's issue is they couldn't, they couldn't get water there necessarily. They had a place.
Right, cause then they have a ditch at all.
Right, exactly.
You should have had a ditch originally, somebody push one air.
I never had a ditch.
Well, see, they, they've been pulling out of that well.
Back in the day? We watered somehow clearly.
They didn't have.
Back in the good old.
Years ago.
And when this.
Yeah.
Or at least the field did.
Yeah.
The city's, your box is steel.
Do you remember where the water came from?
I didn't know about the park.
Was that their ditch back there? Isn't that, how did we water the arena?
Well, we just turned on sprinklers.
From the well?
Well, there was a pump. I don't know if it was from the farmer or from the river, I think it was on the river.[1702.02]
You don't think it was from the ditch?
What's the, it's there for everyone.
Back in the day, you just hack the hose over the.
Back in the good old days, we could get whatever you want.
You just throw that, throw that man's oil and crank up the diesel.
But, but the thing we have to remember is back in the good old days, we had a concrete ditch that ran all the way along the bike path before there was ever a bike path.
Right.
That watered both of those farms, flood, irrigated both of those farms. Today's society, today, we cannot water one of the farms with a sprinkler system because.
We don't have water.
Pipe's too small. Cause it's an enclosed pipe, so that's why we put the data one end. So once we get the, everything tied together, we can put a ditch around, clear down the road and around and pump out of that ditch if we wanted to. Because where the center pivot is and the pump, we don't wanna pump out of the well, cause we're trying to those water rights. We wanna pump out of the ditch.
Right.
Yeah, we already got the right. You're getting a covert that needs the highway though.
Uh, we've already got it.
Do we?
Yeah. It goes right in front of Ed's tree, Barry's house. It goes across and then goes down and goes in front of Ed's house. So then there's that gravel road that Brent put in. We have to put a covert there, a ditch and a covert go down through the trees. And go clear down.
Well, that might help the trees from stop dying.
Yeah. So we.
Maybe we oughta put the ditch back.
Seriously, we're losing trees out there.
Yeah, they're almost all gone.
So, so we could do that. And, and that would, bottom line is we have to do it anyway to run the pivot.
Right.
We've gotta get water over there to the pump to run the pivot, so we don't pump out of the well.
Probably wanna put just a little pond right there.
Yeah. So.
Okay. And if you remember right, last time we talked about, Ideas said that they would definitely take care of the grass on that. That's true. That's true.
And if we were to land application with Earl, we can use that on that as well.
Sure.
That, that started, that starts tomorrow.
So Adam, refresh my memory if we still, so we could take over the.
South end.
South end now. Within the next five years. Is it five years?
Sure. In the next four, the.
For the rest.
For the rest, yeah. We said three to five years is what we said, yeah, in the next five years. Is what that would be, so. But at the last meeting, Justin wasn't here and I wanted some input from Justin on what he thought.
On North Bingham County Park, the one side that we went and looked at. We've got the parking lot that.
Yeah, I guess, I guess a few of my concerns is that it's pretty run down, right? If we're gonna take it over and have Shelley's name on it, we try to keep our parks looking pretty good, so. I guess we need to figure out what kinda money we wanna get, you know, put into it to get it up to par so we can have our name on it and keep, keep it maintained well, looking nice.
Okay.
So, um. Like I said, me and the mayor went out there, you know, a month, you know, two months ago, looked at it, all of the, all of the, which we can get a lot of volunteers to help with, but we got all of the corral panels need to be painted, the, the deal up top needs to be worked over and painted, um, the weeds need to be cleaned up, the parking lot needs to be swept up and probably at least silo coat at minimum. Um, there's, there's just a lot of work to do out there to get it probably back up to where it needs to be.
Right. And I, I think that volunteer work, I think there's plenty of volunteer work.
Do, do we, do we have money for those bleachers to be painted?
The Juanos owns the bleachers.
We got a donation of a thousand dollars to go towards redoing the small.
From a local donor, right?
It was from the classic eighty-one.
Right, so it was, yeah, I know who the individual is. So we have cashed that then.
Jas, Jas, I gave it to Jasmine Saffie. Did she put it in?
What was it?
The check for a thousand dollars for the bleachers.
Oh, um, I think so. I haven't.
You were on vacation that week, so yeah, Jasmine took care of that.
So we're hoping maybe to do that during the spring and to service, which we can talk about.
Yeah. So I, I think that what we can, I, I think we can address a lot of what you're talking about as far as volunteering, but like the silo coat and that kinda stuff, we would just, I think we need to figure out how much it would cost or whatever and we, we attach that or tag that at budget time or whatever, or, or maybe we look for donations or something for that.
Is one of the concerns or considerations, I guess, in whether or not to move out there, take that over? We're kinda concerned like, is it gonna become the pool where it's like a resource for the community, but it's a net loss to the city every year? You know, is that, is that part of what the concern is here or?
So, yeah, I'm sure it is. I mean, Justin, as far as the time that his guys may have to spend out there if there was maintenance or anything that we have to do on sprinklers.
But I thought, I was under the impression that this was being ran by an, an organization that was still gonna enter into a contract with us.
We will, with Ideas, yes.
So would they repair the sprinkling system and things like that?
Well, that, we would, that would be part of the, the contract we'd have to discuss with them. But I think they're willing to do, um, a lot of things in order to get it out of the community, into the city.
Yeah, I have, I mean, I have some, I personally don't have apprehension about it. But I have no constituents that would have apprehensions about us using city funds to, to operate large portions of it or to maintain large portions of it.
I guess I don't see, I, I don't see that there would be a lot of funds that would be used on the city side.
Yeah, that's what I was.
At least on, you know, on the south end.
Basically, we talked about before and I agree, I didn't think there would be.
Right. I'm not saying there won't be any because I'm sure there, you know, we don't know.
It's just I don't, you know, if our.
But I think it's gonna be very minimal.
Yeah. Okay.
So we have the ability to water it. We've just gotta.
Figure out.
Either get some pipe or put a system in or some, you know, something to water it.
But we gotta do that on our own property, so it's not gonna be dealt with.
Yeah, so we're already gonna run everything to the edge of it anyway, so it's gonna be, and the pumps that are, we use the same pump.
Right.
So. I, I'm personally okay with it for the fact that, uh, I feel like the community uses it.
I do.
And, and we're not gonna have a lot, big expense, uh, of city funds to maintain it.
No, and I wanna control it.
Well, I, I would like to see there any used as an arena, not as a demolition derby.
You have a lot of, you have a lot of people that agrees.
Yeah.
Yeah. And I think there's.
I mean, the schools use it, that's all I.
Yeah. I like the idea of, of taking control of it and importantly, taking control of a lot of that area out there, but. Yeah. I just don't wanna see, you know, just make sure that we have volunteers and people repairing it as opposed to our crews being there on a regular basis. That will give people heartburn.
Yeah, well, I, and I, I would kinda see that for sure.
Well, that, that is one thing I wanna make sure that the group that's running the historical park or Pioneer Park or whatever it's called, that they're still running that and, you know, taking all that, that the city's not taking that over.
Correct.
Yeah, we have them pretty.
And we, and we'll, and we'll, we'll get a contract with them.
Yeah.
We'll work on that a little bit, but.
Okay. I.
So I'd make a motion that we go ahead and approve taking over, uh, the south of North Bingham County Park. We were actually, November first.
We changed.
We, we said take over, yeah, we're talking.
Yeah.
Okay.
So.
Oh. I, I, yeah, I thought you were, there was a few other questions you wanted to, okay, did you luck into the water? Are you gonna have him maybe run some numbers first? No?
No.
No, I think, I mean.
Okay.
I think a lot of those concerns you've addressed and I'll, but I think we'll also address it in the, in the contract we will have with Ideas. That's the group that's out there.
I have not budgeted anything for the insurance or anything like that. So the insurance is nine hundred and nine ninety, can't remember.
But that was with the whole park, right? We looked at the whole park.
I think. It's been a while now. I don't remember.
It was, it was the whole park, so. Or just the.
From the tree line, there's a big tree line.
Yes.
One side's got the RV park and the grass and the other side has the horse arena.
They show it's about twenty-seven.
The old Eldred School.
The old, all the old heritage stuff.
I've been back there a couple times. That's your concern, from the tree line.
Oh, you have a survey?
Yeah, is it already on two separate parcels?
It is not right now.
So it's already split.
So it'll have to be surveyed, split.
And whose cost does that point to?
Well, the county has a surveyor on staff. Well, so, but they've, they wanna keep, the well is actually on the south part of the property.
About fifty feet, yeah.
So they wanna keep the well, which I don't blame.
And there's a main line that runs right through there too that they wanna maintain.
Yeah, so they've gotta maintain, or they wanna keep the well that's on our side, so they'll have to kinda jog or do a little bit of a.
Or just have them do a fee and do an easement for them for use.
Well, do we have any interest in that well? Are we sharing the well?
So, no, eventually we will.
If we take, when we, if we take over the entire park, yes.
Yeah, that, well, that doesn't matter.
Right, but in, in this point right now.
If we've got a well on our property that has a point of beneficial use on their property.
Right.
Do we, what, what?
Well, they don't have a well on their property.
I understand that. Are we, are we, um, talking about entering into some kind of agreement with the county to let them use them? What would be our well?
Well, I'm under the impression that the county wants to keep the well.
Yeah.
Well, if they wanna keep the well, that's perfectly fine. All we have.
They just.
We have a well that, we've got water rights out of the county has a.
Well, is it, is it close enough? Is it something we can carve out and legal, so they only ground with it too? Water rights are treated like real estate. They go with the ground. So if we buy the ground, unless they, unless they exclude it, which they could do.
We're not buying that ground. We're just buying the ground where the well may be. We could go and we would go around it or we could just.
Well, not buying, it's a taken title, taken title.
Taken title.
There you go.
Like, yeah, yeah, exactly. We, we could go around it and then we could just put an easement for it and then enter into an easement agreement that their wells on our property, they have an easement.
Okay.
Well, what, well, what the county was suggesting is it's about fifty feet or so from the trees and they, that's where they'd like to draw the line. So that fifty feet past the trees is theirs and then ours would be all the south.
Fifty feet past the tree line?
Yeah.
Is that because they want to add that's?
No.
Want the well.
No, they just.
It's just the well.
Well, do we have a clear?
Should assume nothing.
Do we, do we have?
We should assume nothing.
Did, do, well, and that's where I'm maybe pumping the brakes a little too, is what really is the agreement? Do we, do we have enough details there to know what we're actually agreeing to receive and what?
So they were going to deed us the twenty-seven acres that is south of the.
And do we know where that line is?
I don't know the exact line.
And I, what I was gonna put in here of when they talked, when Adam first made the motion was to pursue the takeover of that.
True.
Oh, okay.
We've, we've gotta have a survey.
Move forward then, okay, whenever I hear motion, sorry, whenever I hear motion, I think finally soon. You're just, you're just saying, yeah, we should move forward with it.
Correct.
But pending working out the details still, making sure, you know?
And all I'm saying is that I would use the tree line as a natural barrier.
Yeah.
As my surveyed line and I would give them an easement for the.
So I will, that's easier, I will pay with that.
Yeah, it would, it is easier. And I give an easement access to the, the well and the well, around the well and up and for entering the property, for repairing the well. And, cause the water rights go through the well to the north and then that way we can, we can retain the whole area.
This is for them.
And we weren't, we wouldn't use that at all for the, for the.
The well.
Hardly, considering receiving.
Because the use of it is beyond, is to the north.
Okay, so I do have one question. Allen, the, the RV park, do they have grazing fountains out there and stuff?
No, they don't have grazing fountains, but they do have bathrooms and they use the well water all the time for events. Um, they do like a cheesemaking thing that you have to have a lot of water for. They use water all the time now.
And it comes from that well?
Well, then we gotta have.
We gotta have an agreement.
We gotta have a review of it. We should reduce the well.
Well, that, yeah.
Yeah.
Well, water's always a big deal, right? I, whenever you say, oh, this is doing well, I'm like.
If that's the case, if we're using it, then it's no problem with it being on our property. We just have an easement where they have a right to come in, access it, utilize it, and an easement going over to their property and then we, we can.
How, how do we use the water from that for the cheesemaking or whatever? Did they run a line from the well over?
They have, well, they have a, they have a spigot that's over by the, um, the storage sheds right by the barn. There's a freshwater spigot right there and that's usually where we get water from for all the different things we're doing like dining wool and all that kind of historical stuff to do. And this is very water by the pavilion, up there.
You have that water, you can have horses out there.
What is the, what is the details of that water right? Does anybody know? It's usually a water right, um, this is very elementary and that's about all I know is a water right has a point of diversion, where you can pull the water out of the source. Has a place of use, says where you can use it and it has limitations on the flow rate and also the purpose of using that, that the water's authorized for. Do we know any of those details about this? Because that, that might dictate.
So, so.
Well, there's a link to that.
Part of the issue was, is that they come to the park and they said, we don't have any water for you guys cause we can't provide water out of the well for the south end. They said they didn't have water rights for that.
Well, that, well, sounds like that's.
Even though they continue to allow them to use the water, they said they didn't have the water for them.
There's probably a place of use that is defined beyond the south side of the property.
I'm hoping the place of use includes the whole.
But I know that they have struggled and said that they have, they don't have water, and I guess that's the south part they've talked about.
Yeah.
Cause I've always heard that. I've heard that from the county permission, that was a problem. So they, you know, obviously the place of use is the grass area. And, but they've allowed people to flush the toilets and things like that with a line to the south. And, and that will all have to be defined in a, in an agreement.
Well, see your, so the well itself is just like a, a home, a, a well that you.
It's a domestic well.
So basically it's for the trailers spaces. It's, it's for the bathrooms and showers and then there, there's some spigots.
And I think they had a problem, and that's right, cause now I remember, now I remember studying up on this. I said, well, this garbage, when I, when I. The, the, the lawn portion, they had a problem being able to pull the water out because I guess it's beyond the scope of what they're. Their title is, it's only titled, I think, it's here again, happily.
Yeah.
So what do they want?
Oh, so it is treated like a domestic well.
Yes, but they're watering all the grass with it.
Yep, yes.
So reporting more of the right.
I can check that out in about five minutes.
Well, I was gonna say, I heard that they have bought water rights so they can water the grass.
And then they have since then. So I don't know. I'll have to check it out. It'll be, it'll be on the Idaho Department of Water Resources site. You can pick it up.
Okay.
And so, all I'm saying is I, I hope everybody's clear on what they're getting or not getting.
But that's what we need to, we need to, yeah, we need to know that now.
So that's one of the other things we gotta look into, yeah.
Is the, is the well and then, um, the accessibility to it from them and. Yeah, I, I would, I would go to the natural barrier with a surveyed line.
Yeah, I, I just do not leave it in the weeds.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Yeah, what are these?
No man's land.
Yeah, so we're better off to go down the tree line.
And just treat it as an easement, but. Yeah.
Well, so, so the motion, yeah, just.
To move forward.
Forward in that direction.
Yeah.
Okay.
I, I don't.
Okay, so moving second head that we go ahead and move forward in the direction of taking over the south side of North Bingham County Park. Uh, and working on the agreement with the county.
And with Ideas.
And with Ideas. All in favor? Four in favor? Okay.
All right, I'll meet with, I'll meet with the county and I'll meet with Ideas and see if I can have anything for the next meeting.
Okay. All right. Department reports. VJ, have you got anything else for us?
Uh, I'll just go brief back to the last meeting, talk to Doc, Doc's ordinance that would require that with any list stations that are connected with our sewer system be built to have some specifications, some standards. And so I didn't, we didn't get on the agenda tonight. That was, me and just to get to Sandy soon enough, but I did draft a really simple ordinance. Um, having her review it, I invited anybody else who wants to take a look at it before we.
I forwarded it. Tell me if I sent it.
Did you?
Oh.
And then, uh, you know, that's, I just tried to find the best place to fit it in, our chapter, you know, title eight, chapter one. Um, so I just added a little bourbon there that says that, you know, any list stations that are required be built to city standards, which will be adopted by resolution. That's pretty much all it said. Anyway, we'll have that come before the council next go around. That's all I have.
Okay, so Dave was supposed to be working on getting this a standard, right?
Yeah, Dave, Dave and I's been talking about it, so we're, we should have it ready for the next meeting.
Okay, perfect. All right, so Sandy, he put that on the agenda for the next meeting?
Yeah.
And then if you adopt the ordinance and then you can, uh, vote on whether to adopt the resolution, adopting the standards.
All right.
Okay.
Perfect. Sandy?
Um, so we're gonna lose our cable and email December fifteenth, so I've been checking into a couple of different things and I think Gmail is a good way to go, but we do have to pay for it where we're, they do have local government rates. Um, the basic, which is just basically emails, a little bit of the lowest package I can get is six dollars per user. I think here we will have about ten users because the police, you guys do yours through the county for your officers, right? So you would need one and then Justin would need one, the department has to need one, and then you guys would need one and Jasmine would need one. So I think that there's about ten, so it would be about sixty dollars a month. Are you guys okay with that?
Where is it?
And it's supposed to work, you want? I mean.
It's Gmail.
It's Gmail, it works.
Yeah, I was gonna say, I think.
It does.
That's the billions of members. It, it works.
And, um, what, what, so you pay the cable?
Nothing. But they wanna get out of the email business, so they're.
They're shutting it down?
Yeah.
Well, and it wasn't working. I think they wanted to do was let.
Comics.
Agree.
Yeah, a lot of times it wouldn't work with them, that's why we have a new email.
As far as what the paper goes, they were archived.
Yeah, they use a copy and depending on like the, the six, I think it's like eighty megabytes or something, user. I mean, they, they basically don't.
Make sure it includes that.
That way, well, it's all included in the package, do you know?
Um.
Does Google Docs send it or?
Well, they have some that you can do with Google Docs, oh, I'm just, it doesn't say it. Just looked it up and we have to have our own domain, domain too. So like, I didn't want to get too far in it in case we chose not to do it, but like we would have it be like our, our name and then at and it'd be like, um, cityofshelley dot gov or dot org or something like that, you have to pick your domain name. So I didn't get clear into it, but I know one of the packages included Google Docs, but I don't think it was the basic one. But I can email you tomorrow and let you know.
I don't think the basic one has docs and sheets and all that other, it just has email and.
Yeah, that was in the cloud.
I think Drive, you get Drive out of it.
You can get Drive, yeah.
Yeah, but I can let you know what the other packages would be too.
Yeah.
So, have you used sheets and docs?
So I have Google Docs and I have basic.
You have?
So Cox and we have basic and I have Google Docs.
Oh, you have Google Docs and you have basic, okay, I'm gonna check into that.
Do you have the sheets on it too?
I do.
So that would, I, uh, because I use it, so I like use it on a daily basis, that would be a way for you to easily communicate with each other. It would be really helpful.
You know, the school uses Google Docs, Google meetings, oh, it did have a Google meeting on it too.
Google Meet?
Google Meet, yeah.
So is that like Marco Polo?
It's like Zoom except for bad.
I just didn't pick up the phone and talk to him, but you know, that's me.
We can email us.
In Google Meet, you can set up your own group, so we don't have to do it on text with phone numbers, you do it through Google Meet.
We're gonna, Sandy, we're, listen, we're, we're gonna have to raise the budget a little bit because I'm gonna have to have somebody just to do my text stuff for me. If you guys get too technical.
Are you a kid that can do that or something?
Yeah, I probably got a seven-year-old that can do that.
Well, I'll, I'll pursue a little more, but you guys are okay with paying for servicing because that looks like what we're gonna end up doing is having to pay for it.
Yes.
Okay, and I'll bring back some more figures to you. Um, a couple of other things, when we did the RE zoning and regulations, like how wide the lot was gonna be and the size of the lot, we have a little chart that makes it really easy to go in and follow it across and it has like R one, R two, all that. And I, I conversed with BJ a little bit, said, hey, we, it would make it so much easier because when people go online to look for this, that's where they're looking and they can't find it. They actually have to go to the main ordinance. So I would like to be able to take like the RE stuff and move it over to that little chart. But to do so, we'd actually have to send it back through P and Z because we're changing a section of the code. Are you guys okay with doing that? Okay.
Yeah.
We did the first one anyway, we changed them all and went through and updated it all before I came here. It's not hard.
We did do it once when we added the other zone and it's just, you know, it's like.
Gotta go one of these things and then I'll pause that one because you gotta make sure it all fits in the yes or no or, or maybe.
We'll see, I'm like, we're Microsoft formatting, sorry.
It was good last time, it worked.
Yeah.
We see it all.
Um, the other thing is I, I let you know a while back about a R C E T meeting that Corinne and Mari need to attend was going to be outside, so it's October twenty-seventh, um, all day. Now they have made it into a Zoom meeting because of COVID, so it'll just be here, but we'll still need to close for that day and have lines closed so they can sit and go through the training on their, their computers. So I just wanted to remind you about that, that that will be closed, so we'll get some information up, um, on the website and on the doors and stuff.
Make sure everybody knows we're following off the hook all day.
Yeah, we'll do that. Okay, the next one's kind of a policy thing and Justin, I apologize because you were, you were sick and so I didn't want to beg you with it, but weigh in on your ideas for this too. So we had a little bit of an issue come up with people building new houses and a lot of this has taken place in Copper Meadows because we don't have as much, uh, the jurisdiction of the building permit, I mean, they tap into the water, they tap into the sewer. When somebody comes in and needs the water turned on, we immediately put the bill in their name and we charge them for water and sewer. Because we don't have the ability to know what they're doing with that water, it's just been policy. But we found out that there are other people who have been using the water that we don't know that, we think a plumber might be turning on the water when they go in there because the meter will have usage and then the new owner ends up paying for all of that. And we, we don't know how long it's been, we don't have much, how much sewer is in that. And we've got, and developer right now that's very reluctant since they're not gonna pay for sewer. Again, we don't have a way to control what they're doing, it's just a policy, the water's on, the sewer's on. So I guess to, to confer that policy and make sure you guys are okay, um, what we'd like to do is put some kind of, like when people come in to pay for the water and sewer tap, especially if it's outside city limits, give them some kind of a paper or maybe even tag it or something saying the water has to be turned on by the, by the city, a plumber cannot do it or it's a violation. We'd like to come up with something like that to hand to the developers when they pay for the tap. What do you guys feel about that?
And what did Justin feel about it?
Yeah, so the, the curb stop, we, we call the curb stop, that's the valve that's the city's valve, that's the valve that plumbers are turning on and off without permission. That is a city valve, that is our curb stop for that, for that homeowner of that property. So.
They gotta know that.
They, they gotta know.
Is there a way, is there a way to lock that out though? Is there a way that we can put a lockout on it?
And they've got some different locks on it, but not.
Well, just a tag, then break the tag.
Well, the tag you can empty and then put back on, so is there a lock that we can put on, like lockouts?
They, they sell some, but they're, you can break into them very easy, anybody with any.
The mechanical knowledge knows how to get in and out of them.
Right.
So this was a question I got brought up by somebody who's developing around town and they were kind of curious about it themselves was, why am I paying for this when I'm, I'm not doing anything with it? And I said, well, painters aren't doing anything with it, your guys aren't cleaning anything out, the concrete guys aren't cleaning anything out? Well, yeah, they are, but I'm not, well, you're the one building the house. So I see both sides as, as somebody who wants to, you know, if you want to develop and you want to have it, but if there's no way to lock them out, how would you control it?
I don't see both sides, I look at it this way, you know what, when you sign up for city services, you sign up for the whole thing. We, and I know we're out of cans right now, but we can throw a can into property and sewer and water whether you use it or not.
City of Alamo, that's like the dam when they get the building permit.
When you get to that point of your house, you're paying for services.
I agree with that.
And it, it simplifies it for us, every other city does it that way. And all this, they're about, well, I don't know what you said, doesn't matter. I go to California for a week, I think it's my sewer, I don't recall the city and complain. I mean, it's, when'd you, when'd you sign up, I think you signed up for the whole thing.
So do they have a, so do they not sign up then for it until their house is done?
Well, you know.
Or is it one of those that we don't turn on and we make it so that you can't turn it on unless you guys turn it on?
Yeah, but we're like, we're finding out that plumbers have gone in two months ago, so like.
Turned it on.
The painters and the tile guys and the concrete guys and the, you know.
So. So let's just.
They're settling around the house, you know?
So let's just have a big enough fine that when they turn it on, it doesn't matter how much they've used.
They won't.
But when you basically.
If the homeowner turns it on.
Who turned it on though?
Yeah.
Or who, who's gonna take that fine to which plumber?
The homeowner is who's gonna pay.
The property owner.
Okay.
Yeah, because they need to be responsible for what's going on.
They're responsible for, are the contractors that's building that. So if their plumber turns it on, then you charge them a thousand dollars or ten thousand dollars, I don't care, but the city turns it on or they don't turn it off? That's my.
Well, I like Sandy's idea too of having, giving them a reminder, you know, like when they come in, I don't know at what point, are, when you give them the building permit?
No, because some of them, we don't do building permits because it's outside the city limits, the county issues the permit, so, but when we collect the tap fees, they have to cut. So before they go get a sewer permit.
Before they ever even physically.
Before they get a building permit, sorry, they have to pay for the water and sewer tap provided the county.
So that's when we would.
That's when we would hand them that, let them know, you cannot turn this water, like.
Right for us.
If it's for a contractor that just wants it to clean out paintbrushes or that and is doing everything outside, that's a choice, if they want to use that water, they're gonna get billed for sewer too. If they don't want to get billed for water to do outside stuff, then they would need to figure out how to pack their water in.
Yeah, bring in a little tank.
To do their cleaning.
I don't, but I like the idea of telling them, hey, look, we shouldn't have to tell people this. They don't have to, it's not their system, right, it's the city's system, but.
And sometimes they're just using it outside, but we don't have a way to know that.
Right.
And like you said, sometimes months before we find out it's been turned on anyway.
Yeah.
I just wonder if there's a tag, we could have made a plastic tag, that you could, you know, you have the little thing that goes on top, they have the little holes. You just tie it through one of the holes and have a tag that says, this is the city of Shell, do not turn this on without contacting the city. It will result in a, a substantial fee if you do so without, you know, city's permission. As we just give them notice, we stick, and stick that on your thing.
Yeah, we can try a tag and see what happens, that might slow them down a little bit, you know, if I can think about at least.
Never.
She's got to do enough reading she does now.
You know?
It's like that ink tag on that new sweater, you don't dare break that off, you have to break back and have them take it off, right?
Well, I mean, there are bad experiences, but you got people that will do that, but I think most people will be respectful and, you know, they may have that.
I agree.
I think they'll, I think they'll be okay if they understand it. Is that helpful, Sandy? Is that helpful?
Yeah, I just need a policy so we can make sure everyone knew that as a stat policy, turn the water on, you pay for both water and sewer and you don't, you don't turn it off, the city does and we're giving people what is stat related.
Can I think we have garbage cans, just to get garbage can out, rather than.
A lot of times they have a roll up in there because they have so, so much big garbage that our can can't pick it up.
Right.
Do we provide those ever?
Okay, so I, I do have an issue with giving them a garbage can while they're still building.
Because then we have to be out there emptying all the time.
Well, then they'd be dumping paint in there all the time and then it'd look like crap after.
I mean, that's, that's true, but I'm just saying you buy the whole. Because what they're arguing about is they're saying, well, I'm not using the sewer, I should be paying for the sewer, well, you're buying the whole thing.
Well, I'm not disagreeing with that part, I'm just saying I hate putting a garbage can out there and having.
I agree, and I think you're probably right, I don't.
They just started that work, the water and sewer, around when you turn on.
Well, the, the, the trash is a, it's a residential trash service.
Yeah.
So do you, maybe you start that when.
When, when they get their occupant.
Yeah. Occupy, so you know, they're moving in and that's when you have the can. Because that's, that's really what it's for, it's residential garbage, municipal households waste.
So you separate, you separate out the water then and the sewer, is that what you do?
Yeah, we just search for water and sewer you can.
Okay.
Yeah, we break it down, water, sewer and garbage, so we don't put the code in for garbage, just water and sewer.
Well, that's nice because most cities don't, they, they search the whole thing.
So, but I would say just, let's keep doing that, but let's look into getting some kind of a plastic tag that we just tie on there. You know, it wouldn't cost much.
Will do.
Yeah. And then if, if Justin drives through and sees that the tag's gone, it's pretty obvious, he's turning it off.
Last thing I have, Sandy?
Oh, my word.
Hey, um.
Not just standing up my word, but the last thing you have.
Last thing. Well, Jim told them to make sure I stood up, we could have problems with that today. Okay, so we talked about when the meeting ended, that BJ and Dave should meet with the P and C members to do a little bit of, um, schooling or, or have a learning session? You and I talked about that, yeah, train.
Is that right? I didn't want to meet or Dave or both of us or if you did at all or, anyway, I didn't want to.
Well, we need to have them, do we need to put one more on there now or, okay, so we need to get one more on there and then we need to do a training session again.
I think training is, yeah.
Okay, so once we get a new member on, then go ahead and schedule one for training.
I think so, yeah.
Okay.
One, I think it'd be helpful to have Dave there too, in the past, I've gone by myself, Dave may or may not have been doing his, his training.
He hasn't been, I'd only seen Dave at meetings, he hasn't been there to do training in six years.
So let's, let's do a training with Dave and you both.
It'd be good, because even I was talking to Dave a while ago about some questions I had and it sounds like he's actually pretty happy with our procedures, our, the, the standards and things we have in place. But he says, really, it's just a question of us following them and, you know, working through process and being aware of them and things like that. So I think it would be helpful to have Dave there for some training too if he's available. And then so I can cover some of the legal side of things and he can cover the procedural and the engineering side of things. Okay.
Okay, so once we get a new member, then help us go ahead and get it set up.
Okay.
Okay. That's all right.
Michael?
Uh, flag football's done, um, just getting the equipment back from coaching and putting all that away. Great kids winding down, so I'm wanting to paint the field at least one or two more times for them. And then I have junior jazz basketball signups are out and we're getting all that ready to go for basketball for four months. So other than that, everything's doing pretty good.
Okay, good, and the pool's all put away, everything's?
Nope, it's just so Justin's screwed when they go below sprinklers, they come over and blow water out and help me lift stuff that's too heavy that I don't do by myself anymore. All right.
Maybe more, I don't like it.
Nope, because I'm tired of dumping it over on myself.
Okay. Justin?
Uh, the trail has all the pipe in the ground and all the sprinklers in the ground. We still have a little bit more dirt work to do and then it needs to be seeded or hydro seeded, so that's coming along.
I saw all the cars that have been driving through.
Yeah, we're gonna drive tomorrow and try to line up a bunch of candles down through there. We've got like five spots that cars have pulled off in this snowy mess and they made brucks through it and they ran over a couple of sprinkler heads and.
So was it cars, I thought kids have went over there, it was so.
Well, some of them are going into the preschool right there because you can see where all the cars lined up in the mud and you turn the wind over the road and right down into a driveway. So they must be lining up and off the road, lining up in the mud, yes, who knows?
So what are you putting, are you putting, are you putting caution tape, chief?
I can put whatever you want there.
You know how much caution tape it would be to put caution tape along the path?
If we could put some.
We're gonna stick them in, so you'll see what. Yeah.
I think mortars would work better.
Why is this, they have bulkers to take the traffic off a bit?
Big bulkers, big.
Yeah, some of the Afghans, even the ID.
Yeah.
So ID or whatever, that works effectively.
Other than anything else going?
Good, we got, we got all cleaned up, I'd say, cleanups this week and then we'll be going around next week starting to actually gather garbage and hauling out there, here in Byron, Byron. Um.
We got all the patches done?
We, well, we got one more patch on the road now, we, you guys did three water lines in the last two weeks. Got a little more patching, do a little bit more concrete work to do. I'm hoping H and K's in here within the next week or two to finish up spruce and do our big patch on Byron, I've been working with Cameron on that, so it's, they just got equipment all over the place, we're trying to get it gathered back up enough to come finish up the little projects.
Well, they're supposed to be doing the school right here this, this next week.
And I think that, I think he's gonna try, while the equipment's here, to get our projects done, I think that, that's kind of what we're working towards. So, um, next week we'll start blowing out sprinkler systems also, we, we did turn all the sprinklers off to the parks last Thursday, so we'll start blowing the systems out. Um, and then White Moller has turned his two-week notice in, he is going to go to Smith's and start selling traders. So we will be doing some hiring, so I just want to wish White a good luck on his new venture and it's been, uh, he's been a good kid, it's been fun having him on.
Yeah, good.
No, other than that, things are, we're moving right along, so getting ready to change from one season to the next, so.
Pushing this Saturday?
Nah, not even close, not even time to think about it.
Good.
We gotta do this next week.
All right, chief?
Uh, everything's going, going good with me as well. We have our testing Saturday for the online slot, um, so hopefully we'll get something good out of that and with any luck, I should be able to have, have a, have a name for you at least by next council meeting or, uh, the, the one after that hopefully. So other than that, everything else is going, going well.
Yeah.
Thank you.
Jeff?
I need your help.
Hey, I told you to split up, to split up the town and we would each take a section, I haven't seen my section yet.
Well, I'm just about to get to that.
Okay.
Uh, I'm gonna give you guys a, a bunch of lists and go out and just pilfer people that you know you can go to early quickly and have sign this agreement for the sewer.
District.
District to put it online and, and what we'll do is I'll just. District for the online and, and what we'll do is I'll just give you your different areas of the city that you can go to. You know, I think the, the best way to approach it, no, I'll give you some verbiage there, and that is not to go into major detail, other than to say to people. The sewer district is currently operated by individuals who don't necessarily care about sewer. They have other interests. There are cities and counties that have diverse interests. And by creating a district, you will then have a representative whose sole purpose will be to see that you get the least, the most effective sewer. You can buy for the least expensive price. And I think that's the way we sell it, in a nutshell, not how they go into detail. And I think you can get people to sign it. You only need one person to sign it, and it has to be one property owner. So I think if we can get someone, you know, I think we should do this, we should go to some of these developers, like, we're interested in that, and have them sign free tours of their lots. I don't know if the judge is gonna buy in on that. He may not, but I might as well do it while we're doing everything else, just in case it works. We need to have ten percent. Of all the people in between us and Adam having signed on. So I'll get those two given. If you can get that done here in the next couple of weeks, I sure appreciate it.
If you get the temperature up above fifty.
That might be helpful too.
I, I can handle.
I'll try to talk to the manager before I go back.
Would you work that out?
I think next week, it'll be fifty-five.
Perfect. Okay, get them out before next week then. Tell them you're not.
Yeah, it's totally, they'll take three hundred by now.
Yeah, but I don't want them to invite us in. It takes too long.
It's gonna be warm enough, their ink's gonna work on paper.
Yeah, we want, we want them to boot us off the doorstep as fast as possible, see, so we're getting more signatures. So. Is that all you got, Jeff?
Yeah. So you don't need husband and wife to sign this, remember?
Just one property owner.
Property owner. That's the sign.
Okay. Left?
I'll just make suggestions for the job they've done so far, for having fall cleanup still, cause. I looked around at Idol Falls today, which they do not do fall cleanup. They sweep up your leaves only on certain streets. And there'll be a lot of people with a lot of mess there tomorrow and the next day, and the next day. So it's kinda something cool our community does that not others do, and it's pretty awesome, so. That's great. And thanks to Michael this year for educating, at least in my family, allowing my, my son and some others to go out and have a good time with flag football. He kinda sent out an SOS as it got rolling and all the teams got in the middle of it, and somebody bailed on you or something, and so. My son and a few others stepped up and they had a great time, and they had a great. Uh, learning experience and also given the opportunity to be in charge a couple of times, you know, for a few deals and really helped that a lot, so I really appreciate that.
Okay, Kim?
Speaking of Michael, um, I'm just gonna read one letter. Actually, I've received two more. He's well liked. He must be like.
He's a brown-noser, yeah.
But this one was, um, thank you for allowing us Snake Brimmer and Blackfoot folks to be part of the flag football league this year, and for all you did to make our experience a positive one. I was quite nervous about coaching and everything it would entail. I appreciate the time you took to visit with me in August and to give the guidance I needed to get things started. As the season progressed, I look forward to seeing you at the games. I felt comfortable calling or texting if I had any questions or issues. The game schedule was well organized. Your officials did a great job motivating the players, controlling the tempo of the games, and ensuring the kids learned and had fun. You must be living right, because we sure enjoyed some nice weather throughout the entire season. The work you're doing is most definitely an asset to your residents of Shelley. Please feel free to list me as a reference should the need ever arise, Brian too. So.
Brian too.
So do you know, that just tells us, like, Michael goes up and beyond. He's doing a good job and just with your attaboy with them. And I love to see the young kids coached, cause you know, those younger boys look up to their peers and stuff like that, and anyway.
Is this the guy that did Blackfoot? Yeah, so my son cooked, wrapped a couple of their games, and he said that was, those were the best games, because that coach didn't know. And the boys that were helping wrap knew more about football than the coach did, and so he'd get to help with those kids, and so that was fun. It was fun for the kids. He said they were the best kids. They were, they were all in on wanting to play, all excited, had some of the best games, so that's pretty cool.
Yeah, but that's what, the city of Shelley, that rec, that's what we do for those kids. And then the other thing is, um, are we good to go ahead with our second annual spring into service? Um, we sponsored that last year for our first time, um. With, we teamed up with Just Serve. We had a huge turnout, remember? That's when we did cemeteries, roadways.
Some of them are out of town, I think.
No, no, wait a minute. Are we talking in the spring? Oh, you're way, you can tell there's a woman on the board. She is months ahead of us.
Well, they do a twelve month play.
Yeah, I know.
Thank you. My hair clings out every six weeks. I'm happy with these.
Okay.
But anyway, are you good with going forward so we can, is that okay?
Yeah, yeah, I think it's great, I guess.
And everybody will be in town this time.
And we're gonna move forward. It was very helpful for Justin, and I think people got, it might have not been too helpful, cause we did, you have a lot of yard debris to clean up in the spring.
Yeah, this was a big spring, but no, the Just Serve, that was, that was awesome. I think it did a lot of work, all we had to do is go through and pick up piles of garbage bags, everybody put it in, you know, central locations, and we just went through and cleaned up.
So.
So that was a great thing.
And I kinda feel good at the start of spring.
Yeah.
Better than most.
I think the biggest thing that would help this coming year is if the city council members and the mayor, if you could. Be there and greet the large group areas, or just make sure one of you is at each location at some point during that cleanup time. And just, uh, express appreciation for volunteers doing whatever it is they're.
Hey, I did find.
Sorry, are we doing this at night?
No, it was happening. It was a Saturday.
No, I was just thinking if I, if I said thank you to come and then slipped away.
Kind of, kind of like movie nights.
I like.
We'll talk, this is why, this is why we're discussing it, so we'll plan the dates and fit it out there so you guys can mark it on your calendar.
It was fun. They had a great time. They had the huge, the, the main street and down.
It would be nicer to have, I mean, cause I did Stewart and River, but I did Stewart, but by the time I did River, everything was all scattered.
Okay, so, yeah, get a date, I mean, kinda come up with some dates that we're into, or dates that we're into.
Hey, we like sixty degrees, fifty, sixty. I know sometimes you can't predict that either, cause it was cold.
At least, at least fifty.
It's April, dude.
I know, and it rained and it was bad, and it was cold when we did it.
Always gonna be.
I know, it's, I know. Summer's two weeks.
Um, I think we're, uh, close on, uh, getting a K nine for the police department. We're just working on contract.
Right.
But I think contract is approved or, and we're there, so, um, that's gonna, that's gonna be exciting.
Be fun.
Police department, and I just wanna give, I think the police department is awesome department, and I think they do a great job, uh, with, uh, with our citizens and. Our not so good people that come through town, but, um, anyways, I've done some ride alongs, um, and I really like, I think we have some good officers, there's some great officers. And I'm excited to hopefully get eleven oh nine hired and get moving in that direction, so that's all I got.
Okay, thank you. So I have got a couple things, but the first one is I appreciate Adam riding with the police. I've got to ride with them a few times, but. I would encourage the rest of the council to go ride once in a while, just so you know what they do. Not to critique them by any means, cause that's what I tell them right up front. I'm not here to critique you, I just wanna ride along with you.
Um. I would like more action when I, but they don't.
You know, I asked them if I could shoot it down, and they said no, but you know. No, but, but I think if we as a council go ride with them, I think it shows more appreciation too. So I would encourage all of us to do more, but don't overwhelm them either, so if that makes sense. I don't want us every night, somebody riding with them or whatever, but I think we need to.
You'd be surprised at how much it does actually go on in the city, so.
So anyways, I appreciate Adam doing that and, and, uh, the police department and everything they do. Um. Justin's crew, I told him that if he didn't get the path done before election, I wasn't gonna get reelected.
Well, it's good there.
So he's getting closer, but it's all cutting some slack because the weather's kinda on the crack, but anyway, no.
Shouldn't be until the week after.
So my wife, I found out, is paying him to make sure it's done after December. After November second, in December sometime, but no, not really. Uh, but I appreciate all that they do. I, I can't get over how many water lines we've had break this year, just blows my mind.
Everywhere.
And it seems like, you know.
Am I right, chief?
Yes, yes it is.
Yeah, I, I try to drive every street at least once every two weeks, and. Almost every time I find them working on a water line, and I think, oh my gosh, you know? Two days ago, we were doing a water line, so I appreciate everything they do. The fact they jump in there and they get it done, even though they're standing in water and it's crappy and everything, and not, not crappy water, clean water, but just.
Only dirty.
It's a dirty situation, but I appreciate all that they do, and I hope you relay that to them. Chief, I hope you relay to your guys how much we appreciate that. Now, with flag football, um, I also guess I'll be able to watch a few games, and I had a couple of parents from, or grandparents and a parent. From Blackfoot come and tell me how much they appreciated Michael and the, the flag football program he put on, so. Uh, they didn't write letters, they just came and talked to me when I was there, but I, I appreciate the fact that we can get the youth involved in a lot of different things. Because that's what's building our future. Um, the last thing I have is I asked BJ to get. I don't even know what this is called, but the Kiwanis.
They have to get something.
Okay, so the Kiwanis does Spud Day, so everybody knows that, and we have never had, well. At one time, we had actually a right, I, I guess the, what do you call it? The right to.
I don't, I don't know if we ever did. That's, we, by, by, by common law, we did.
So anyway, so I asked BJ to get another, to, to file for another state one, and so he, he did it under.
You're talking about trademark?
Yeah, trademark.
I was wondering what that was in here, that's why.
Yeah. So.
What is going on?
So that's why we had to sign a thirty dollar one or whatever it was, so. Anyway, so it's actually part of the Kiwanis, but part of the city too. So I just had him do it through, since these are attorney, I just had him do it for the city, but we can transfer it to Kiwanis if that's what they want. But at least we have it now.
So what is the trademark?
Spud Day.
Spud Day.
So anything to do with Spud Day.
Well, the thing, the neat thing about it is, is we, we, it's, it's, you, you can do a federal trademark registration. Um, I called a colleague of mine, or a boy who probably also saw him build it.
I did, yeah.
Anyway, I called, called him to talk to him about it. But, uh, anyway, um, you can do a federal registration, but it's more money, and the big thing is you've gotta. They'll, they'll protect you as long as there's a, a risk of confusion, but because we're not doing business, we're not doing Spud Days all over the country, we're doing Spud Day here. And so there's not a lot of chance that there's going to be confusion if Wisconsin wanted to do a Spud Day. They couldn't prohibit us from doing it, but. We couldn't prohibit them from doing it either. Does that make sense? So we just did it at, at the state level. That way it does give the, the city of Shelley, uh, the Kiwanis, whoever, you know, our partners are with, with Spud Day, gives us that protection for that. Uh, you know, great longstanding tradition, and so.
But can we, I mean, that's a trademark.
You want me to do that too?
What is?
Mr. Russell. So what about.
So does that mean we, that we can prevent people from using it in advertising?
So what about your.
So, so Spud Day is our thing. Now, if they use their own name, like if it was Jimmy's Spud Day, and that's how they advertise this, then they probably get, so we can't, we can't. Prevent them from using that term altogether, probably, um, as long as, but they can't say like, this is the Spud Day something.
Or in conjunction with.
Right, right, and that's, and that was the, that was one of the reasons why we wanted to do that, is we needed to kinda establish some lines about what. What we're going with and what we're, what we're not, what we're not involved with, so.
Anyway, so we got that done, so now we have that, so. Anyway, other than that.
Literally, I, I pulled it out because.
No, you did, no, you should. And you, you already called me, no, you should call me.
Wait a minute. BJ, he told me it's only gonna be like thirty dollars, not nine hundred, eighty-nine dollars, so.
Finally, thirty dollars.
Anyway, so I appreciate everyone, and I'll call this meeting in a minute. Yeah, they're gonna give you thirty dollars then.